It is 6:38 on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. We will start with approval of our minutes, however, we do not have enough folks who are here at that meeting to be able to make the motion and approve. We're gonna wait to see if we have one more member coming in, then we can take it up. Visitors comments? Go on once?
Yeah.
Alright, no visitors comments today. I guess it's early in the school year. With that, I actually wanna start the meeting saying good luck for a brand-new school year. You know, we had a lot of great things happening last year, but also we had a lot of challenges. We're hoping that this year, we're gonna continue to work on improving a lot of things, but we also, as I mentioned at the convocation, we also hope that we're gonna have a lot more participation this year. I will say it the same way I said it then, and this is for the benefit of those folks who might be watching. We don't pay lip service when we say, "Please come to our meetings," or "Reach out to us," "Email us." Whatever you share with us, if you want it to be confidential, it's confidential, but what's important for us is to hear from you. If we're gonna be a community, whether it's a school community or community overall, that is trying to improve things, that is focused on continuous improvements, unless we hear from everyone what is working and what is not working, we can't really make those improvements. So, we depend on your input, on your feedback. We consider everyone stakeholders in our schools, in our community, so please let us know how we're doing. Let us know what your thoughts are, and then we'll have a good conversation around those. With that, next item is our student representative. Annabelle, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be back. So, over the course of this year, obviously, it's the beginning of the year, so I'm not... Not much has happened yet, but over the course of the rest of this year, I'll be bringing attention to events that are being planned, such as cotillion, any issues raised by the student body, positive things that are happening in student, school, sport life, you know, any teams making it to like Western Mass or anything, like those successes, and then any club, like activities, events, or fundraisers. I'm also still a delegate in both ARSEC and ESSEC.
Can you remind us what those are?
Which, yeah. Which stand for Regional Student Advisory Council and State Student Advisory Council. So, I'll be sharing with all of you what's going on with students at both the regional and state level, in terms of any widespread issues that they may raise, or the products, or, and the products that we're working on, and the progress that we're making in those. So, over the summer, there was a three-day ESSEC conference where all the delegates sat through lectures and presentations, explained the projects that the Department of Education is currently working on, which are also the various topics that we get to choose from as the projects to work on over the course of this year. So, the state level chose to do civic engagement, civic engagement and health and wellness as the two work groups for this year, and then the health and wellness group, which I'm a part of, split into two groups. One, that's working specifically dealing with mental health, and then the other group is working on the current health and wellness policies in the schools. And each group is in the early stages of deciding what specifically they wanna tackle this year, but as progress continues, I'll keep you all updated. And then next month, I don't remember the date right now, but each state delegate is gonna be presenting one of the topics we heard about during the summer conference, at the ARSEC meetings, and then the students there will decide what topics or topics, depending, they would like to work on for the year, and then once that's decided, I'll share that with you guys, too.
Cool. Thank you. It is great. That's, it's really important for us to hear all that input. Do you think that there may be some input from the student body here as well? I don't know, it's Student Council, or students, do they...
That'll be...
Is there, is there a way for your friends to share things with you, so you can bring those to us?
Yeah.
Do you guys do that? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, like, it's not like official, as, official as like Student Council meetings and stuff, where we talk about those issues. But I mean, like, before class starts, or in the hallways or stuff, we'll talk about, you know, issues that we feel, you know, like, in previous years with the schedules and stuff, like new schedules, how we switch. We'll talk about like what we think is working, what we think is not working, and like, that's how I brought that, that voice of the students to the meeting. I forget which year it was, but because we, we talk about those sort of things, even if it's more unofficial than Student Council and stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Do you guys have any, does anybody have any questions? No? We're good? Oh, yeah.
Can I ask?
Sure, please, go ahead.
Well, I think it's wonderful what you're doing, and I think that's very interesting, that health and wellness piece. Yeah, I'm just curious, I like what your father was asking you. How does that, how do you have the opportunity, or when do you have the opportunity, to come back to the school, maybe talk with like administration, or the principals, or the teachers about what you're doing there? How does that all tie together, I guess?
Right. Um, I mean...
Because it sounds excellent. I mean, I'm sure you're learning, hearing great things. I'm just curious how that...
Um, I take the stuff that I've heard about, and that we've been working on at the meetings, and then I bring it back to Student Council, the Student Council meetings, that we, yeah.
And you have an advisor?
Yeah.
And you have an advisor there, yeah?
And then we discuss that, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
So, I'll actually, since you asked, Katie, and that's a great question. It's something that we've been, we discussed a few times, and often it's in the context of how this is a good connection of students to regional issues and state issues. And the Department of Education is doing a great thing by really bringing these students together, but they don't seem to have a real clear way to convey the outcome of those meetings to the school districts.
So, it comes full circle.
So, yeah, the whole expectation is that the delegates are going to do the whole work, even though there are supposedly advisors, and I know that there are, who are expected to send year-end reports, or convey some of the outcomes of these meetings. And if it is indeed the students, there should be some mechanism for that, some support around that. And if it's not, and if it's the state, then there should be some other ways we can, we can receive that information. I don't know that that path is clear, but there's a lot of value. It seems like they are talking about a lot of things that are important to the students, but also to, you know, all school districts. So, so far, at least in my estimate, and I might be, I might be too harsh, there are some opportunities that were missed, but I know that the students who are part of these meetings, they are really interested, they are really passionate about these things, and they are almost on their own finding different ways of bringing those findings and decisions to their respective school districts and school committees. Maybe this year, and you know, since Annabelle mentioned that she would bring some, maybe we can find a different way, maybe we can have a... If there are some topics that are important to the overall district, maybe we can have, I don't know, a meeting around those things. Maybe we can have a presentation around those things. Maybe we can invite some of these students who are in regional student advisory committees to Granby, so they share what they learned, what they found out about at those meetings. I mean, I don't know if the other districts are doing it, but doesn't mean that we can't do it. We can show that we are really trying to engage our students, and their voices are important to us. So, that's a great question. Thank you. Okay? Yes?
Kind of bouncing off what she said, like what's supposed to happen is that the end-of-year, like, reports, like once... I think it's the May meeting for state, the State Advisory Council, all the final reports and everything will be sent in to our advisors, and it's the same with the regional. I forget which meeting it is, though, for regional. I think it's, I think it's the April one. But we are, like, final reports and the products and stuff, that all gets sent in to our advisors, and then it's supposed to be, things are supposed to be revised, and then they're supposed to be sent out to school districts, depending on, I mean, we had bounced back and forth, like whether or not it was gonna be sent to principals, or superintendents, or school communities, or like what exactly we were gonna do, depending on like the projects that we were working on. But I, I mean, I had asked you if you had received anything.
Yeah, we didn't see that.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if that's actually being sent out. Because I know that, like, my group, last year, we sent our report in, like, early, like, we had finished everything, we'd worked really well. Getting everything done was like really efficient process, and then I thought that what we had worked on, like, had gone out, and I'm not sure that it did, so I guess that's something to work on. Because we are doing good work, like, like you said, like, everyone's like really interested and passionate about, like, invoking, like, change and progress, like, in our school communities. So, that's not, that's not like the issue, but like, we're definitely, I mean, I know that these kids from North Hampton that are in it, they specifically took the information and like brought it to their school, I mean, they say like their superintendent and stuff, so that's why that school, it got like, the stuff that they did, got implemented, so I'm not sure if that's what we have to do, but that... It's supposed to go to the advisors and then out to whoever they send it to.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's gonna be the same way, maybe this year you can do the same for us, so we have a little more visibility.
Yeah, no, I think that if, I mean, because I brought it up at the conference in August, that we didn't receive any information, the district, so... I, I mean, I'm definitely gonna be pushing that we actually find out, like, what's happening, and hopefully, if it's not being related to school communities or anyone else in other school districts, that we can all push the more for that this year, so that it actually happens, and then the work that we're doing is actually being relayed, because it's, I mean, it's good work.
Yeah, that's, yeah, thank you. We have quite a bit under new business tonight, so we're gonna start with the memorandum of understanding?
Yes. So...
And you might wanna wait on that one, because I can't.
Oh, you can't?
Then we'll do it then.
It's really information-only, so...
You sign those. We don't really do anything.
Right. I just wanted to bring your attention to a change in the custodial services, because SOAR will still be at West Street School for the remainder of this year, even though we will have a custodian on-call and locking up, and they've agreed to cover the cost of that. And there is...
They being the collaborative?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There is definite language for the number of students that need to be enrolled in the program. So, last year, as the program rolled through the year, there was some fluctuating enrollment, and so that became a question of whether it was financially solvent, whether it could continue. So, I just wanted, while we have the cameras, I wanted parents to know and understand that the program needs to have 12 students registered in order to run, and so if parents are holding off, you know, not getting their registration forms in, but intending to, they really need to get their registration forms in, so that we know how many students are enrolled, and that we can run each session of the, of the program.
So, when you say the number's fluctuated, once folks sign, sign up for this, how, how does it fluctuate? They take it back, or...
Nope, by session, so they're, they're signing up by session sometimes, and so...
Oh, not for the whole thing?
Right. Yeah.
Can't we just restructure? I, I don't know, but is there a way to really make sure that that doesn't happen? I mean, it can be through finding the right mix of activities, or changing the structure?
Right. I think that's what the collaborative is doing. You know, last year was the first year of the program. It certainly was a fledgling program, and so this year, they're trying to do the same. I think that they're looking at the curriculum that they're providing, looking at the interest of the students and the families, and what they're looking for, and still tweaking what we offer, or what they're offering as a program, so... I mean, there was talk about, you know, you know, the students having to go to West Street and all of the busing, but, you know, we still have one more year before we're under one roof, and then I think it will be a different program, once all of the kids are together.
So, do the numbers drop below the 12, because I thought last time you mentioned it was, it was more than that, but now, now you're saying some things change?
Yeah, it, it just fluctuates. It depends on the time of year, honestly. You know, there's a lot of excitement at the beginning of the year, so we have a lot of enrollment, and things happen. You know, kids get involved in other things, basketball, dance lessons, there's some conflict, so...
It has to be an average of 12 per day.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah.
The other thing is that, well, a few things. One is, what is the timing of this? Do you know when we would start?
It has started.
It started already?
Mm-hmm.
So, what is the number right now?
I think they have good enrollment right now. I think they're...
You would've had to have an average of 12 per day in order to open the program.
Right.
Okay, so we're there right now?
And I believe, I thought there were 30 students registered, about 30 students registered, but I can verify that.
Because, remember, this was something new, and last year, people may not have known how, you know, how it would go, whether it was the right thing for them. Hopefully, it's a little more established now, and there is a little more conversation around it. Let's just hope that the participation remains high that way.
Yep.
And not just for participation's sake, because this was really, things that were selected were, were things that would enrich students, would be of interest, would be stimulating, so...
And support the curriculum.
And support the curriculum, yeah. Okay.
You just need to be careful if it has to change, because I think people bank on the program, and they'd have to find alternate things, right?
And, and so that's what we ran into at the end of the year. There were some conversations about whether or not the program can continue, and that's when the discussion happened about, you know, we have to have 12 students per day, average, to make sure that we can financially run that program. So, that's why I'm saying it right now. It needs to be clear that that's what we need to run the program, so there may, you know, if they fall below that, if, if parents are thinking about registering and then don't, the, the program may not be there. If they don't register, they have to register.
But if the program started, that means we already have...
Per session.
Does it mean?
So, they're registering by sessions.
Okay.
Or if attendance falls off, people don't, you know, people don't use the program.
Okay. Alright. How else are we advertising these, these programs?
Um, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, there was a flyer in the first...
And the person who is running the program is very vocal. Anything she attends, she makes sure that she talks about the program, and lets people know what's available, and whose friends might also be attending, and you might be interested for having your child attend, with, you know, Bobby, who is real good friends with Joe.
Alright, so there's that connection.
Oh, yeah.
It's also on Facebook.
Yeah.
So, do we see these numbers fluctuating a lot? I mean, I just, I just know from, from my experience with daycare, you gotta have that lined up now for the rest of the year, and this would be like an alternative to that daycare, so I'm sure a lot of people are kind of locked into what they're gonna be doing through the fall, and maybe even into the spring.
And sometimes sports, like soccer, or basketball, or T-ball, and baseball, whatever, in the spring, those schedules interfere with the after-school program. That's when, in the spring, I think is when you really see a difference.
Is there anything else that we need to do about this?
Nope.
Alright. Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. If there's anything else we can do, please let us know. The next one is professional teacher status.
So, we were not able to get all of the teachers here today for that, so we are hoping to postpone that announcement to next time. So, that would be the 18th, the 18th.
Was this a celebration type of...
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Thanks, Deanna.
Uh, there's a transfer request?
Yes. So, we actually may wanna wait for Deanna on that one. She was the one that brought forward the request for the transfer.
Yes, yep, okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes. The next section is on, on four policies. Three of them are second reading. We already had some exposure, at least the first reading on those. And then there is a first reading one, but I'll let you speak to those.
Oh, I'm wondering, because Deanna's not here, if we might wanna take the agenda out of order, because E and F, I think, are announcements?
Say it again?
E and F are announcements.
Okay, let's do those.
Okay. So, I wanted to bring attention to, I should've followed Annabelle's lead, with student leadership and Project 351, which Granby has been a part of, middle school students that are at a level and participate in community service projects. And so this year, Project 351 is working together with the 9/11 Committee to promote a remembrance of 9/11, which is Monday, but also to help people also remember that 9/11, under former President Barack Obama, signed a bill to make September 11th a national day of service, and so that in schools, we will be commemorating 9/11, but also commemorating and working on our commitment to service in Granby, which is very strong, and one of the things that I think I'm most proud of when I talk about Granby, the sense of pride that our students have in community service, and the work that they do, not only in Granby, but beyond Granby, and how well they represent all of their learning, and represent the community with their service. So, I just wanted to bring that forward and, and make everybody aware that that would be coming on Monday, 9/11.
Since you're saying it that way, I did not realize that 9/11 specifically was designated as a National Service Day, because...
I did not either.
At my company, it's, 9/11, I thought, just fell to that day, because in September, we usually do something for community service, but it's 9/11 this year. Okay, so then that makes sense.
Would you like me to read the letter that we received from...
Sure.
Okay, Seth Moulton, who is a member of Congress.
Yes.
So, this is a letter to the Project 351 ambassadors, and those are middle school students that come from all over the state and gather and work on service projects, but this is a letter directed towards them. "On September 11th, we will come together to remember one of the most tragic days in the history of our great country. 16 years ago, our nation suffered a terrible loss that shook us to our core. We mourned those who were lost, and we never allowed the tragedy to divide us. As we join again in remembrance of September 11th, it is important to remember the sense of duty and commitment that we share as Americans. President Barack Obama immortalized this idea when he signed a bill to make September 11th a national day of service, saying, quote, 'Even the smallest act of service, the simplest act of kindness, is a way to reclaim that spirit of unity that followed 9/11,' unquote. Now more than ever, the message of compassion, service, and togetherness is of the utmost importance. New generations of Americans must set aside partisan divides and minor differences, and embody that same spirit of unity to tackle the issues of today. From internal challenges to threats abroad, the young leaders of today will have to rise up with courage, humility, and kindness to overcome the challenges ahead of us, and lead our communities to a better tomorrow. I am proud to represent the constituents of a state with such an inspiring and driven young leaders. I hope that your commitment to Project 351 is just a first step in a life of giving back to others."
Great. Thank you for...
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So, what will be our initiative on 9/11? Are we gonna do something at the school? Are those students or students who went to this project on 9/11?
So, we actually have a leadership meeting on Friday, so it's short notice. We just received this. I actually just received it from our president of the Superintendent's Association on the 31st of August. So, we're gonna be talking about what we can do, not only on 9/11, but also moving forward to celebrate community service. That's such a strong part of our program here. So, I don't know if there'll be anything specific this year, but I think putting it out that we can expect now that it is a national day of service, and to remind ourselves of that, and that we should be prepared to do something moving forward. I mean, we've always done the moment of silence, certainly, as that referenced, I don't know if that letter referenced it, 8:46, I think, was the moment of silence, but beyond that, to move into the national day of service, I think, will be our goal.
I think it would be nice to say something during the morning announcement.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Do you want me to continue?
Right, so, did you wanna do the announcement of Senator Lesser and...
Yeah, sure. I mean, you, you had some conversations with his office as well, but our state senator, Eric Lesser, sent a message to us inviting us to a town hall that he's gonna be holding in Belchertown on next Tuesday. But he also offered to meet with us, with our school committee. I don't know if it's, it was an invitation that was forwarded to other school committees, but he asked us whether we would like to meet him before the town hall, and we took him up on his offer, and hopefully, we'll be, we'll be speaking with him next week. Obviously, we're gonna be talking about things related to education, all the issues that we are, we have, we have been talking about, and we are experiencing, so looking forward to that.
What's the date of that?
It's on 9/12. 6:30 is the town hall, 6 o'clock is our meeting in Belchertown. And I'm guessing town hall is open to the public, so if anyone is interested in joining, there will be question-answer session after his part. Everyone's welcome to join with any questions that they may have. He's our state senator, so, you know, I'm sure he will, he would be happy to answer questions. Also, you had some conversations with his office.
He's going to actually be coming out to the elementary school. I believe he's going to be at East Meadow, and he is going to be doing a read aloud with students, and then he will be open to questions from students, so...
Cool.
Yep, he's happily engaging with us here in Granby, so...
That's nice. Also, this, this allows us to continue to keep in touch with the elected officials, as we've done last year, and we wanna do a lot more of that this year. So, this is a good opportunity for us to do it early in the school year and, and build on that. Alright, any questions on that?
Yeah, I just heard one. On that Tuesday meeting, is that 6 o'clock, or is it, it's in Belchertown?
Belchertown. No, I think the event is at the Church of Christ in Belchertown. That's where he has the town hall, and I will clarify with his chief of staff, but there was no other indication that it was gonna be somewhere else. My understanding is it's at the same place.
Yeah, pretty sure.
But if anything changes, I'll let you know. It's a good question. Okay, next we have enrollment.
So, we are not final with enrollment. We are still enrolling some students as we speak, so for the next meeting, we will have final enrollment numbers for you as of that date. We've stabilized, which is a good thing. I will say that.
Are you able to share more when you say stabilize? Are we...
We're not losing students, to the degree that we were last year, certainly, at the end of last year.
Okay, so there's a decline, but not as steep. Is that what that means?
Correct.
Or stabilized means we did not lose anything, and we're holding steady?
We're holding, I mean, we've still declined from last year, but we're holding steady. So, if you remember, last year, we did not open seats for school choice, so we did not fulfill the seniors that left the district. So, we had declining enrollment plus no school choice students. So, this year, we have leveled, because we have opened up the school choice, and we've, at the very least, we have brought in the same number of school choice students that left as seniors. So, we're ahead from that perspective. We still have declining enrollment in Granby, as most towns in Western Mass do, but we, we've all... But we've also, as you will see in the transfer request, we had to hire a second grade teacher because we had seven students move into second grade. So, once that all, we're hoping to have final numbers, as I said, by next meeting. That's usually when things stabilize out.
Thank you.
Have a good feel for our overall enrollment.
Okay. And as we mentioned last time, we had additional students coming into our second grade.
Mm-hmm, second grade, yep.
And also, I would like to repeat the fact that we actually had school choice students that we could not accept because of the configuration constraints. In the sense that if we had accepted additional school choice students, we would have to hire a new teacher because it would have inflated the number of students in those classrooms. And, one, the numbers were not, when you distribute them across their respective grades, I guess the numbers are not as high. But also, we did not want to commit based on school choice only because we did not get that support from a town meeting.
Right. So it's very unfortunate that in kindergarten, which is a grade that you like to enroll school choice because, you know, we, you know, we're very proud of our elementary, we're proud of all of our programs. But we know when we have students that, as kindergartners, they typically will stay with us, you know, throughout their career. And that is a grade level where we have not been able to open school choice seats. And that's unfortunate because that is a long-term commitment and would help enrollment long-term. So we may be able to open them up in first grade because there are three first grades. But it really would have been nice to open that up in kindergarten.
And we're going to have to continue to have those conversations because it doesn't, it doesn't really make sense. We're trying to have both sides of the conversation and we're hoping that both sides will make sense, but they will not. Either we say we have this nice investment next door and a lot of people are showing interest. And as you said, if we have these new students come in at an early age, in our experience, they always stay throughout their school experience here. Either we do that and accept them, or we can't just say, you know, from the other side of our mounts that, hey, you know, nobody wants to come to Granby because, you know, we don't really have a lot of things that these folks want. Obviously, there is something, whether it's, you know, whatever we're going to be offering in the new school or whatever we're already offering. But we, you know, one way or the other, we have to commit to one of the two narratives. And we can't just say no to everybody coming in because unless we invest to that early enrollment, the numbers are not going to grow in the middle of the road. People commit to other school districts.
So, I'm going to show just how naive I am, I guess. Is there any way we can gauge or sense what enrollment for kindergarten would be like, school choice-wise, with the opening of the new building for next year? So we can start to maybe plan and plead a case and look at ways to do that?
There's, kindergarten is probably the most difficult grade to gauge because they are coming in, it's their first, oftentimes, it's their first school experience with us. We often see that parents register kindergarten very late, if they're not in a network of parents that are talking about registration. So kindergarten of all of the grades is really difficult to manage. We also had Children's First open a kindergarten program in town. And so we are hoping that that partnership, although some of our students are there, some of our Granby students are there, they are opening that kindergarten program to other towns. We're hoping that those students make Granby their choice in first grade so that we may be able to develop that partnership as it had in the past. Parents have a good experience with Granby students at Children's First, and then they come and enroll here in Granby. But it is hard to project at the kindergarten level.
How about, I mean, just a natural follow-up, how about for first grade, then if we know?
First grade's a little easier. And there aren't as many choices, you know, there's private school kindergartens that people can enroll their students in. By first grade, they've pretty much made their choice, so.
So because if we could figure out a way to gauge interest from outside of Granby into that new building, that could help us kind of lay a plan and a case for some additional structure through the sixth or even 12th grade, right?
Absolutely.
So, you actually make me think of something else. Last year, we approved 96 new school choice seats, right? And it was on top of what the numbers were in each one of those grades. So it was about eight, I think it was uniformly eight, but on average, at the very least, eight per grade. But that was, that was not K through 12, it was 1 through 12, is that correct?
Correct.
So we left K, Deanne?
I believe we left K.
Still out there, open, okay.
Because K, we knew based on census that we were going to be very close to capacity in the two classrooms that were already established.
But I guess, you know, based on what Mike is asking, what that makes me think, if we know those numbers, you know, if we say we can accept, this is a capacity we can have first grade. So if everybody from K up came to first grade, which I don't know if is the case or not. But if we say, you know, if we go one more, one more class, what does it mean in terms of the financial commitment? Maybe we can just reserve something for it, just in case. And if it doesn't happen, we just, you know, don't use it.
So that would have been what we would have used contingency or school choice revolving for?
Exactly, and we don't have that.
So when you're in a position where you're using revolving accounts to balance the budget, you don't have a contingency to open up an additional classroom in kindergarten that, you know, in September, I think we have 22, 20 to 22 students in kindergarten with four or five on the waiting list. Not quite enough, you know, to open up. But if you do open up, are you going to engage more families to come? You know, you just don't know. So without having revolving accounts to be able to try, you just don't know. We're so, we're so tight that we don't have the contingency in the budget.
But again, that's the conversation we need to have because we can't, we can't have both narratives. We can't say, you know, nobody's coming. And when the people come, we just say, you know what, we don't really, we did not reserve enough money to be able to accept these students. So it's one or the other, and there is no, I'm not saying that things will go this way or the other. But at least we have to have that honest conversation and get a final decision on that. Then we can see what we can do.
That was kind of the point I was making. We sit here, we talk about the content of enrollment every time. And then we'd also talk about not having enough space to take in somebody who destroys. It's like, well, can we collectively try to figure out a way to do a little bit of...
I mean, you know, the best-case scenario is what you have in second grade, which is you have enough in-town enrollment, you know, students that live in Granby for three classrooms. And then because of that, you have additional spaces open for school choice. That's the best case in Granby is that you would have three full cla, you would have three classrooms of Granby students, and then that offers seats for school choice. But we're just at that awkward size. And yet, we're seeing some turnaround. Seven new families moving into second grade, and they have siblings in other grade levels. You know, the lots that are, that are, the building lots that are on the market now, the new homes that are being built, those are single families. And so we're starting to see the turnover in elderly people retiring or moving out and those homes now becoming available to younger families. So, you know, Granby is attractive for that. People are looking for Granby. And so I think we have an opportunity and an obligation to really promote Granby and what we do have here to fill those houses and provide the education that we do.
Agreed. All right, thank you for that. So let's just do the last one and then go back. The procedure for naming the new elementary school building?
Yes, so based on school committee policy, you need to approve my recommendation for naming, the process for naming the building. And so, naming of the school proposal is the document. So I recommend that, that the committee, that we, sorry. Okay, so the memo that you have in front of you outlines the specific policy on naming the school facilities and when it was adopted and reviewed, which the latest review, the last review was 2003. And then it is my recommendation that the committee, that a committee comprised of school staff, administration, school committee members, parents, and community members make a recommendation to the superintendent for the naming of the new school building. The committee should take into account the history of school building names in Granby, grades served in the new building, and bring forward community thoughts and ideas regarding the new school name. The superintendent will then bring forward the recommendation to the school building committee.
Oh, the school building committee.
So I have a very honest question. Will this complicate the process?
I don't think so. I, I, I think of it more in terms of how we run some of our hiring committees and that we might not necessarily come to an agreement, but we can make recommendations and suggestions. And so I don't see it as being contentious. I also don't see it as, this is the name we're going with, you know. So I think just being able to have that open discussion. And then it may be that a name comes forward and everybody is happy with that. But I don't think that that necessarily has to be the outcome. I think the committee is bringing forward concerns and thoughts about what may be good names for the school.
Okay, and when do you think this process would begin?
Well, as soon as possible because the school building committee needs to approve the name. And then we need to start building, purchasing the lettering for the school. So that's coming, that's coming up on the timeline. So Winslet and Associates has been very good about reminding me that we need a name. And so with everybody being back now, I would say within the month to have a meeting and talk it out and make some recommendations and then move that forward.
All right, any questions on this one?
Just to let you know also that Mr. Latroy has sent out an invitation to staff to join in the committee to name the school. So he is...
To select members?
Right. So Bill and I have had a couple of conversations about, not only, thank you, Robin, not only naming the building, but also the whole transition plan. We're getting to the point now where people are going to want to know when the groundwork, not the groundbreaking, the ribbon cutting will be. They'll want to know how the students are going to be involved in celebration. We need to spend some time looking at other communities. My own community, when they closed two schools and brought the students together into one, they wrote a song and they had a new logo. And they, so they really got the students in the community involved in that. And therefore, the transition to the new school went very smoothly. So that's the kind of work that the committee, that Bill and I have been talking about. And that a piece of that would be also specifically the naming of the building, so. And it may be that this group of people would like to continue and work on that, if they would like to.
Just food for thought, I don't know if it'd be appropriate or easy to do where you can reach out to groups that wouldn't necessarily have a whole lot to do with the school, like maybe the senior center, get down there and see if they can, you know, come up with a couple of names to add into the mix.
Yep.
Just, just so everybody in town feels like, you know, they have a hand in it.
Yep. Cool, thank you. Now, let's just patch all the holes then, go back to minutes first. Let's approve the minutes, we couldn't approve the minutes, Deanne, because Marie wasn't here. You weren't here, right? Does that mean?
Correct.
Okay. So, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes from August 21st?
I'll make it.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you both. Any edits, comments, discussion?
All right, so we don't, I just, I'm not sure about this. We don't include anything that happened at the select board meeting, right? Because I see this was called after the select board, that's really the only...
Yeah, this, I don't know that we did anything at the select board meeting.
Nothing.
Yeah.
I was late, I didn't make it.
Yeah, so there was nothing really, it was...
Five minutes, I was there, five minutes.
Right, and we did not really have any participation. And we did not really call it a joint meeting or we did not even call our meeting to order because we didn't have enough people when they started talking about it. So there was no meeting. There were just members of the audience, so this is the only thing we have. Okay, thank you, though. Anything else? Okay, all in favor to approve the minutes from August 21st, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. You abstained, okay, there is one abstention then. Thank you. Transfer requests?
Yes. So the transfer requests I uploaded, I will be working with Mark to finalize the account and the line item. And I have been working with Chris to sort of finalize these. But there are three, the three that we talked about last time. And they are in a draft form right now, just for your review. One is the special education tuition. One is the Smith vocational tuition, which is a student who moved into the district. And then one is the grade-two teacher request. So I just wanted to bring those to your attention, that they'll be finalized this week and sent to town hall.
Okay, but you already had a conversation around this, it's going to the finance committee.
Yes, yep, that's the process, yep.
Okay, any questions on that?
Just one question. So they get, get sent snail mail? Do they get faxed or emailed?
I'm going to email them and then follow them up with hard copies.
Just checking.
So I guess at least in principle, the conversation that you had, there was no problem pursuing that path, so.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, it was a good suggestion. Deanne, thank you for pushing on that. No more questions? Okay, now moving to the policy updates.
Yes. So, we'll take them in order, bully prevention and intervention. This is a requirement of our coordinated program review. We were cited because your policy stated that the school department would create an intervention plan. And that's where it was left. So this policy includes the intervention plan, which would suffice for resolving the issue with the coordinated program review. And so that's why it needs to be added to the policy.
Okay. In an odd way, I'm glad that we got cited.
Yo, absolutely, right, yep.
That at the very least tells me that somebody's looking at these things and making sure that they're complete, so it's good.
Right. And so I did share with Emery. In addition, we were cited for not training, not doing compliance training on all of these as well. And that's not unusual. As policies are changing and court cases get resolved and we get information, policy sometimes is a little slow to be revised. So in addition to doing all of the policy changes to bring everything current under civil rights, we are also updating all of the training. So teachers, thank you very much, teachers, it was 132... Uh so teachers, thank you very much, teachers, it was a hundred and thirty-two page PowerPoint that they went through. Um and um recognizing that this year it was a very heavy load, uh because it was the first time that all of that information had been put into one place for them. Um and recognizing that next year we would be able to simply just update. So these are changes based on case law, these are these are changes based on current legislation or new legislation. And then we've talked with staff that every year we will choose one portion and have um more in-depth training. So um this year we had um our attorney, uh our special ed attorney's office come and speak to the staff on uh social media and the use of social media, not only from kids, um but also uh from the employee and employer perspective. And so staff, I think, um we're pleased with that and that's sort of how we're gonna move forward with um compliance training, um in the expectation that um teachers need to know what's in the uh compliance training, but that there will always be time for us to go in a more um in-depth level, um particularly as things become um come to the forefront based on an issue or, you know, based on um, you know, something that happens um somewhere else in the country, uh that we need to be made aware of, so. And so really, it's the same for all three. It's the bully prevention and intervention plan, the physical restraint policy, and the curriculum review cycle. Um uh the curriculum review cycle was cited because um there was not language around uh reviewing curriculum and curricular resources for inherent bias. Um and that we have to train people on how to do that and so that when we're working in a curriculum review cycle, people are made aware of that, um and we actually document that we've um reviewed sources, um and textbooks, materials, supplies, units that we're creating for for potential bias.
I was gonna ask you about that. So the read read it out section is what we're missing, not necessarily what was problematic, right?
In the curriculum?
Yeah.
Now let me just grab curriculum.
That's what it looks like.
That's what you added, okay.
Yes, yep.
All right, cool.
Yep.
All right, so for those three, this bizarre, this is our second reading. So I guess we can vote on these?
Mm-hmm.
Does everybody feel prepared to vote on these um new policies? The three on bully prevention and intervention plan, physical restraint and curriculum review cycle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's go one by one then. Um is there a motion to approve the updated bully prevention and intervention plan?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any uh comments, discussions? Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh physical restraint policy, is there a motion to approve that updated policy?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussions or comments? Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And finally, curriculum review cycle, updated uh version, uh is there a motion to approve that one?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, thank you. Any comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, so they're all approved. We have a last policy update, uh that is in first reading.
Cell phone?
Yes.
Sorry. I'd like Stephen to come on up and talk about cell phone, personal um electronic devices.
So that's what it is, right? I that what that's my question, the officially official name of it is personal electronics use policy or something like that?
Personal, yeah, it's proposes a personal electronics policy.
Okay.
Personal electronic devices, yeah.
Okay. Did you wanna join us?
Absolutely.
So you just grab a chair. So um let me preface this with um this is uh does not mean that we did not have policy, um but um uh we have noticed um um in general in society, um uh I guess maybe an over-reliance on um technology um and the distracted nature, um when we think about distracted drivers and, you know, um so I think the staff under Stephen's leadership um had a healthy discussion about what some of the concerns were um about uh personal um technology uh and use devices, what what as educators um is effective use of technology in the classrooms and in the school, um but also recognizing for students, this is part of their daily lives, this is how they communicate. Um and so to be respectful of that and also our teachers and our staff members, that, you know, technology has become a lifeline. Um so if we're in an emergency, we have our cell phones and they're on us. So I think being thoughtful about um what what our goals are for technology, what some of our concerns were, um and come up with um some flexibility, um but also um some criteria around uh why we're using it, when we're using it, how we're using it. Um and and so there's there's just a little bit more clarity um for students and for staff. Um and so um I'll turn it over to Stephen.
Thank you, yeah, I think um this is certainly an ongoing discussion, discussion that I had over and over and over in my previous district, and I think it's happening in districts across the country because it is about where is that balance between, you know, understanding that this is a tool, students have it, many students have at their disposal, and it can also be a distraction, so how do you balance the two? Um I don't know that you'd be surprised or not, but this is like the first thing that came to me from teachers July third when I was in, and I think it stemmed from a conversation that was held at the last faculty meeting last year. So I kinda jumped in midway through, what I did this summer was I drafted a completely new policy, presented it to staff um through email first, but intentionally held off, right? We talked at the last meeting about the timing of my coming on and school committee meetings and policy getting put in with the start of school. So um that made this a challenge as well because I really wanted to have teacher feedback. So we spent time last Tuesday and Wednesday getting some teacher feedback um about the policy. Basically, the policy that I drafted, I got feedback on, compared it to the policy that was in place, and based on the feedback last Tuesday, I made revisions for Wednesday. Again, we brought it up and we put it to a vote of the teachers and they voted unanimously to send this policy to um school committee. So I think there is a missing link at this point, and that's the student voice of it, but I think students will find that this isn't a r- a major change from the policy that was in place. Our goal in the end was to provide teachers some discretion, teachers some flexibility, provide some clarity in places where there wasn't clarity previously, specifically um specifically in what I'll call public areas, in the cafeteria, in the hallway spaces. So some clarity around those things, but we still want this to be a tool for students um that they can use. I also feel like, and this was said by the teachers throughout our discussion, the policies is only as good as the person and people enforcing it. So like I have some expectations of staff and students that the policy is a guideline for people, but classroom teachers should have a classroom policy and it should be enforced consistently and um it should be communicated clearly to students because I don't think it's fair to students or to teachers to say, well, we're holding you accountable for this, but we weren't clear about what our expectation was upfront. So I think this policy does most of that. Um I think it does a lot of that. Um and I do think it provides some clarity. I think students, it it'll be up to students to understand the classroom policy and there when there are times where cell phones and personal electronics shouldn't be used, but there are also times where they're gonna be welcomed into the classroom and need to be used as a tool.
This is a policy that we had some conversations around, um not once more than that. Uh the biggest problem was what you mentioned. To me, poli- a policy is something that really uh creates a picture that is clear enough for everyone to follow. It's a, you know, it's a guideline or, you know, the rules as as we know. Uh there there was a lot of, a lot of vague uh description and discretion, as I recall, or it wasn't as clear as this. So the way it is written right now, I think it does most, probably not every single thing, but it it does cover uh many of the concerns that were raised. So my question is this, is this in use right now?
Not in use until it would be approved. I did offer to teachers that teachers in drafting their policies should use this as a guy if they believe that it's important, and I said, I don't think, even if this gets, it doesn't get approved, using this as a pol- using this as your classroom policy isn't gonna ma- make major changes. The guidelines, the clarity that we provided or tried to provide, isn't a major change from what it was in the past.
Yeah.
So it's not in use right now.
And that's 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 good, you know, that that we're still following the process. But honestly, I, you know, when I read through it, it was it was pretty clear to me where you could use your phone and where you could not. Uh part of the reason why I think there is still a desire to have phones in the classroom is for technology reasons, right? Because we're not really uh uniformly across the board offering good technology to the students um or to staff, but uh this at least clarifies where it's okay to use it, where it's not. In fact, I like that, you know, you can use it in the cafeteria when you're having your lunch, you can do certain things, but you cannot do these things, and here are some of the consequences. One last question around that that I have is this. There are, the word discretion sometimes really, you know, gets to me when it comes to policies. We still have sections where we're talking about administrator discretion. Will that leave a lot of, a lot of vagueness that may not allow us to uh implement this the way the administration wanted or teachers wanted or this, you know, student students wanted? Is there, is there anything that may just create this um uh confusion that somebody may come back and say, you know what, we didn't know what the discretion was and now your your punishment is harsh because there is really no clarity around it?
And I think the where it says administrator discretion, I think you're referring towards like the consequences.
Consequences.
I think where we sometimes paint ourselves into a corner of saying first time, second time, third time, we don't always list to the tenth, eleventh, twelfth time and inevitably those things come up in schools. So I think our, myself and Ms. Jordan, our job is to be consistent, to treat each case individually, but also communicate when you get to fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh time, have a plan in place that's communicated that says, if this continues, this is what's gonna happen. So it will never, I I can say to you here that it's never gonna be, you know, somebody got a verbal warning on the first time and somebody else got suspended on the first time for just having their cellphone out or something like that. So the it doesn't, it shouldn't, and it's the leeway to do that, but it won't paint us into a corner and say, well, you know, w- we now have this plan, we can now create a plan for this individual because it's gotten to a certain point. Um and I think it allows us the discretion in that way.
I agree with Emery, and it also says it right on the first, in the first paragraph, it says, for these reasons, the high school staff will have discretion within this policy to define appropriate and accept acceptable use of personal electronics in the classroom. So I do think that is a little ambiguous.
And it says number thirteen is that the classroom policy must be aligned with the school-wide policy. So they don't have to take it, so a te- one teacher might say that, for example, um you can use your phone, an individual student might be able to use their phone to take notes or to use it uh as a calculator. Another teacher might be providing the calculators for the class. So there's some discretion in that, and that's just one example.
You're allowing flexibility for the teachers.
And that's based on the teacher's feedback.
So will this policy, um I, well, I think it's worth the policy change going out to parents separately. I mean, I know it's in, it's gonna be in the policy online and whatnot, and teachers are gonna have it available, but I think the change is worth sending out so that, cause parents aren't gonna be looking at the school policy word for word.
Right.
So I think it's worth a connected or an email blast or something, just giving parents head up, heads up so that they can enforce it also at home.
We we've talked about how it is that we can communicate policy change in general and that we've done policy changes and then people are not aware of those policy changes. Um so.
Um so yes, I I think part of my responsibility is to make sure that the school-wide policy change gets communicated, and then part of the expectation is that of teachers is that the classroom policy is being communicated um both to students and parents and available upon request.
Yeah, I know the how that works because what they do is they send a copy of their classroom expectations home with the student and parents have to sign off on it, and I can guarantee you that parents are not reading a four-page syllabus for seven different classrooms.
Right, right.
Uh not that I, not that I did that, I read word for word on every single one.
We'll send you her copy too.
Right, but yeah, absolutely, and this can.
Some of my kids forging theirs.
So we can, we can talk, we can certainly have, um if when accepted, we will certainly have a conversation about how this gets communicated. Um unfortunately, open house is before the next school committee meeting, so that was one of the um mechanisms to communicate the change, but um we have a lot of bright people in the building, we'll be able to make sure that it gets communicated clearly.
When when is the uh open house?
Uh a week from Thursday.
Thursday, right, yeah, okay. Um yeah, yeah, a- again, just, you know, two, two very quick points. One, one thing that I like about it, it says school-wide, so it's not just for students. You, the expectation is that everyone will have some uh some guidance as to how to use it, including staff and teachers and everybody else, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh the other thing is uh it does, for the most part, eliminate some of the ambiguity that we had here, which is not helping um anyone, especially teachers, because some of them may or may not want to really say the same thing as somebody else and, you know, leave your phone here and, you know, you can't use it for this class type of thing. It puts everybody in a difficult position sometimes to to uh be the guardian of the policy. I think every good policy should be its uh its own guardian and just be pretty clear. Um the, I said two, but the the one thing that just popped in my head, you mentioned that the students were not yet part of the conversation. It would be great if that conversation can can be had so that, because it's, I mean, this is obviously something uh that they are really attached to.
Right.
So if we can at least make this one example of such conversations where the dialogue uh is happening, but to explain why the policy change is occurring, that's, that would be awesome.
So we actually have grade level meetings planned for tomorrow and Friday. Um and the expectation, not the policy per se, is gonna be communicated, an opportunity for students to engage in conversation, but I also think, right, in an ideal situation, this goes through student advisory council and all the steps, so we're ready to kick it off to start the school year. Um but again, back to that timing piece. And and one other thing, I think, like s- the teachers have been great, the teachers, they pushed back on parts of it, they gave feedback on parts, they liked parts, but they also agreed, a- and you alluded to this a little bit, is this isn't something that we can keep coming back to every year. Like we spent a lot of time on it this year, um leading up to school, but that's not how I wanna use those professional development days. I think being my first year and kind of because this was a concern that teachers brought to me immediately, I wanted to make sure that we had their input, but we need to give this policy, if adopted, time to see, is this impacting personal electronics in a way that we want it to impact? It it, we can't do it that every year because then we never have a baseline, we can never see, is this working or not working?
Yeah.
And I think it's about, it becomes about individual conversations, individual students, individual teachers, administrator, staff, whatever it might be, to say, okay, what is working for you about with this policy, what isn't working, and how do we support you with this policy, not making changes because it's And how do we support you with this policy, not making changes because it's not working for you necessarily?
Yeah. No, I, I, you know, I, as far as I can see, it's a, it's a positive change. And I always like um providing the example that use of electronics in meetings is something that has become an issue almost everywhere. And, you know, even in private sectors, not everybody dropped it, but in, in some, uh, some businesses, there is almost a stigma attached to it that, you know, folks who really have to do something with their phones, they just, you know, bring it under a table because they have to take, you know, some message or respond to something. But it's not like the old days that I remember, everybody's on some cellphone there at a meeting. I mean, these are all adults, uh, but nobody's really paying attention and just there, you know, doing something on their electronics. Same thing with, with laptops, honestly. You know, in, in some meetings, it is a ground rule, we're not gonna have any electronics at this meeting because we have to focus on uh our discussion and we have to make some decisions. So this is, this is not a bad message, uh, also, aside from being a policy, to, to send and show that, I think, I don't know who, who it was, just, you know, uh, who said that we, we are going overboard sometimes with our electronics use, and this is not really to punish, this is to create some, this is to eliminate the distraction uh that is keeping us to focus on what we should be focusing on. So it's good, I think. It would be fine. The, the, one thing, as we're having this conversation, I'm thinking about, we can't, uh, we can, uh, we have the discretion to waive the first reading.
You do.
I think we just vote on it.
If everybody had an opportunity to read and you're good, we can, and that would give you an opportunity to um, to discuss at the um open house with one qualifier, and I will ask everyone that. If you would like to have the conversation with the students before we make a decision, that's fine with me as well. I can see that side of it. Then we can wait until next time and just uh vote next time. Since you, you personally mentioned that you-
Yeah, and I think, I mean, right, so I, I'm a bit tug, I feel like I'm being tugged in both directions, because this is something usually that we would have gone over before the first reading. Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, Annabelle, have you had an opportunity to look at this new policy?
Um, not.
No.
No, no, I didn't think so. Um, I think, based on, uh, it would, it's not ideal, but I would prefer if we can get it into place, that we get it into place. Um, as important as the student feedback is to me, I don't think this is, I do still think they have some discretion, and I saw Annabelle shaking her head yes a couple of times when we were talking about certain things in it. So I think there can still be a use, but like it says all over this, in class time, your cellphones are for academic use. Outside of class time, you use them, you know, appropriately, but you can, you can use them, if it's texting, if it's games, if it's social media, again, it should be appropriate. But they have that leeway during morning break, during lunch, during, you know, I actually added it up. There's about fifty minute, almost an hour a day that they have time that they could use their cellphone without any issue.
And the rest of the day.
Yes, and the, yeah, yeah, and then the other seventeen hours.
And I didn't mean to put you on the spot. The only reason why I brought that up, because I didn't, if, if it's, if it was a personal wish of yours to have the conversation prior to this, I didn't want to just go over that and say, would like to vote on it, because it's, you know, school committee votes on it, that's, that's fine.
No, I, I think it, I think it's okay, I think it's okay to vote, because I think also teachers have been rolling out some of their classroom policies, and everything I've seen does align to this. Um, and that's where, I think, that's where the rubber hits the road, is the classroom policies that align to this is where it's gonna change. And not every teacher's gonna have their class develop their classroom policy.
And I know I'm probably gonna be the bad guy here, and I'm gonna apologize right up front, but I'm not so sure every decision has to be a democratic one. You know, I agree that, I agree that students, you know, you know, we need to have their feedback, and it's important. Um, at the same time, you know, walking in a business setting, in a meeting or whatever, you know, there are times where you just have to put it away, and there's rules and policies, and not everybody at the company has weighed in on these policy changes, and we do have to keep the wheel going here.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
No, and I agree, and I think that because of, no, I, I think because of those reasons, I think, for this policy-
Well, her grambi gear will be different.
I think for that, this policy specifically, I think because of some of that flexibility for teachers, I think we do have that leeway.
No, agreed. Dot, first of all, thank you for the updates. I think this is a good improvement to a policy that, in my estimate, wasn't a, a good policy, or a clear policy, not a good policy, but a clear policy. Uh, two, uh, thank you for quickly, uh, obviously running it by everyone in the school community uh to see what they were thinking. Three, um, this is, this is a little odd one, not putting it in place before you brought it to the school committee, at least we followed the process. And I think we would be okay to just waive the first reading and then, uh, and then vote on it.
Let's do it.
Okay. So with that, is there a, is there a motion to approve the updated personal electronics policy?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you want to read it?
Pardon me?
Do you have mine? Where will this be?
Uh, this will be online. Every, every policy is online. The updated one would be uh put online. I don't know when you would have the opportunity to post it.
Um, they were voted, um, I would say by next week.
Can we, can we front page it?
It'll cost you. We're trying to raise some money for the district.
All right.
We'll make it a fundraiser.
Good.
Yes, we can, we can.
Thank you.
And what, once it's all the same color and everything, I can email it to parents whose email that we have through Connect Ed.
All right, that would be good.
I, I just have one quick question. Is this only for the high school? Because I, I'm just kinda curious as to when I start being worried about Isaac and his uh-
This is a junior, this is junior, senior high school policy.
Okay.
So this is seven to twelve, which again is where, I think, especially for seventh and eighth grade teachers, where some of their classroom discretion comes in. And I think part of our message to students are cellphone use in those public spaces, while there's a policy around it, it's still a privilege. So if you're a bright, if you're, you know, going against the policy, like that's with those individual plans. So there will be a time this year where certain students won't be allowed to use it in those public spaces. And Ms. Jordan and I have already started talking about um ways that we can monitor that in the lunchroom and things like that.
Is that a district policy?
Pardon me?
Is there a district policy on cellphones, since it, since it talks to teachers?
Well, I guess not.
Guess not. I guess.
Food for thought.
Food for thought. It falls into the handbook, so, um, we're actually, I, I apologize, the handbook didn't make the agenda, but it, the handbooks are in your folder, so, um, if we could begin that conversation, because one of the things that, um, we're going to do this year is to create a single student handbook. Um, and then it will be broken out for junior, senior high school students, and then the elementary levels. So, um, next year, it will be one handbook, and so a lot of what you're talking about will cover the entire uh student, um, population. Um, and then there will be more specific, age-appropriate language for the different, um, grade levels, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And so I don't know, um, like I said, I don't, I, that got by me and I apologize, but, um, Ally and Steven are here if there were any questions about the updates to the handbook.
Okay. Um, so I didn't send it to you, even though I did assume that the edits, the questions, some of the questions at the very least were yours, I sent some comments to Cheryl. I didn't get a chance to go through the whole thing. I, I, when I first started, I thought, oh, you know, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll read through and just, I'm, I'm even sure if I was halfway through.
No, not quite.
Uh, so, um, you have some very good questions that I could see, and there were some answers to some. And I had, I had personal comments to some, and I assumed that school committee meeting, uh, school committee members would have some different thoughts on some of those sections, at the very least. So, um, can we, can we continue the conversation next time, and we'll be better prepared?
That totally makes sense, because the handbook, we know, Ally and I especially know, it's a tough read.
It's awesome. No, but I would totally welcome any of those comments, so if I could get that, that'd be great. I was working on it today too, answering some more of those questions, because Steve had gone through it. Steve's been busy since day one, and it's a hundred and something pages after putting in all the new policies. Um, so it's in draft form.
Yeah.
So there's probably more edits to the one that you have even seen that I was making today.
Yeah, I actually started reading it, uh, almost first thing in the morning, so, you know, I wasn't really burnt out with other stuff. Um, and, and the one thing that caught my eye, and I, I think mentioned that to you, that we s- we have even a uh broader opportunity to review the language and, you know, how we wrote things. Some of the language is awkward, it's, it doesn't really make sense. I couldn't understand, I had to read it again, that I'm thinking, if I had to read it so many times, you know, somebody who wants to use this for a good purpose, they may not understand what's going on, because I'm familiar with the school district. They are, most people may not be as intimately familiar. So we have some opportunities, um, but if you give us till next time, we can just provide more, maybe not for all of the hundred and thirty-five pages, but uh we can have better uh feedback for you.
And it's nice too, because if I, it gives us some more time too to talk to the right people, you know, have a conversation with David about the technology piece, and I had conversations in guidance today, because a lot of the things were a little old and outdated, you know, like guidance and how they're assigned. So it gives us time to meet with those people that, you know, have that section on the policy, on the handbook, so.
That's good.
Well, and like the compliance training, once it's created, then next year, it's here are the updates.
Yeah.
And so I think we've gotten behind in that, um, keeping it updated and, so.
Cool. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have all business. We don't have, do we have anything, any updates on the budgets? Whether it's uh seventeen or eighteen?
Uh, no.
One quick question that I have is, and I think I'm gonna have to reach out to Mark separately and have a conversation. Um, the financial reconciliation process document, I, I, I didn't get a chance to begin with, uh, to spare enough time, but I also wanted to clarify some things with Mark, so I will do that, then bring it next time. Uh, I apologize, I did not even send anything to Dan, so it's, it's still sitting with me.
Oh, is that what you're calling it?
Yeah.
Financial reconciliation process document?
Yeah. It's pretty fancy, wasn't it? Yeah.
Took a lot of time to come up with that one.
For me, it's, it's natural. I come up with things very quickly. Uh, so.
Writing this down right now, so I can speak your language, because I just called it the audit management lab.
That, that works too.
Well, that has a vowel, that would have a better at, acronym, is that what that's called?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Uh, the FY seventeen budget, we have to be done with it by September fifteenth. Do you know whether or not we're on track, since we're not gonna have a meeting before then?
Um, I believe we are, but I can verify, and, um.
And the other thing that Mark was gonna check, check for us was, uh, the final calculation of the, uh, school lunch program?
Yes, yep.
Cause, to be fair to him, I was with him when he asked the question of the auditor, and, you know, he reached out to some other folks, there was not one single answer. So he, he was trying to find what the common practice is, whether or not it makes sense or not. Um, so if we can find out, that would be good, because when we left, it was around eight thousand dollars within the, uh, the contingency that we have. Uh, so let, let's find out. It doesn't make sense either way that we would take the entire inventory that is at the end of the year and just, uh, put it in liability and do it that way.
Right.
If that is the case, the same thing, then the following year becomes an asset, because you should be able uh the inventory that you have, which is, you know, paper towels and plates and this and that.
Yep, frozen goods, yep.
So then that tells me that the difference between your beginning and ending balance in inventory should be what's, what goes there, in which case we're in good shape.
Yes.
Uh, my understanding, but he wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, eighteen, do we have anything?
Um, no, and, and actually, I'd like to wait on, um, the FY eighteen and the sub-pay proposal for the meeting that Mark is at.
Okay.
Um, so he will bring forward, um.
Okay.
Those, because they all have financial.
Bless you.
Bless you.
So, the other two are related to the conversations that we started to have, again. Um, strategic plan review.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do we know when we can start the broader conversation around that?
Meeting scheduled, I believe, for?
October fifth.
October fif- no, that's me, yeah. Um, I believe-
September twenty-fifth?
Yes, because we picked the Monday. Yep. Yep, so that would be when we review that.
Tomorrow too, right?
No, I don't know why that went out, so I will talk about that. No. It's only the fifth, it's October fifth.
Okay. I was a little confused when I read the-
I must have checked something by mistake.
But we don't have a date for the strategic planning session, correct?
Yes.
The twenty-fifth.
September twenty-fifth.
Oh, you sent it today? Okay. All right. Um, is that the one that will include other stakeholders, or is something that we do again on our own?
No, that's us.
That's just you.
Yes.
So then that would be related to us discussing the goals and then starting to align strategy with goals. So those two different line items coming together, okay?
And so then we would be looking to do, um, to bring the community strategic planning committee back together, I would think, sometime in early October.
Based on that, on, on our meetings, to then start discussing objectives
Right.
for each goal.
Right.
Again, we can't go too deep, because that's basically the whole process, and that's why I'm getting a little.
Well, and I think, you know, in retrospect, when I sent the document to you that said school committee goals, as I spent more time with it, I think really those, the majority of those are district goals. And, um, our discussion in the work group was really district-based. And we probably could use the twenty-fifth to really think about, what is the work of the committee in improving our practice as a committee?
Yeah.
And I think those could be goals that are aligned with some of these potential. Um, but it would be maybe more around professional development for ourselves, like with Dorothy Presser, or, you know, um, just, you know, improving our practice as goals, not the district goals. Because I think we have a tendency, and it's a good one, to stay at the district level and, in this very, um, thirty-thousand-foot kind of. And then we forget that the school committee should have goals, which are very specific to your work and how you work together. And, and so I misled ya.
Well, no.
I got wrapped up in the conversation, and it was such a healthy conversation about district goals that, um, I have shared that draft document with my mentor and with some other superintendents. And as we all did, we all were sharing all of those documents and just giving each other feedback. And that was kind of one of the things that came out, was that it, it had more of a district feel to it. And so when we work on the twenty-fifth, I think we can get more specific about us as a group, and then.
Yeah, because I, I, I agree with you that-
I have a book for you too.
Cool.
Effective School Committees.
All right.
School Boards. It's the one that Dorothy Presser recommended, so.
Okay.
That could be part of our goals.
Is she trying to send us a message, or?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Meeting length, no.
The, uh, well, we're, we're almost done.
I know.
Um, I, I agree that some of those will be district, and I think that's how we start, right? The school committee kind of establishes. Some of the others, uh, we should really look at those, because they may be as simple as school committee norms as opposed to goals. This is how we want to operate, this is what we would like to do, and we've talked about that before. If there are goals that should be part of the strategic plan that fall onto the school committee, which there may be some, then those stay within, you know, within, uh, the strategic plan conversation. Rest of them, if there are really truly norms, we should separate those and capture them separately.
I also don't want cookie cutter school committee goals.
Right.
You know, I want these very specific to our school committee.
Yes, and measure it nicely. Yes, and measure it nicely so that we know where we are, whether we're...
And I don't wanna overwhelm us either.
Right.
Yes.
Two to three.
We want, we want, we want goals that we can accomplish by the end of the school year.
Mm-hmm.
Right, Dan?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but then when you get one more year, you'll have another year, okay.
Okay, so that's, that's good. Um, oh yeah, just to wrap up that one, I, I get restless because I really think that some of the existing, uh, uh, parts in our strategic plan, they're either obsolete or they don't make
You've completed them.
Much sense, exactly.
Yeah.
Uh, so I would like to get into that larger group, the stakeholders sooner than later, so we can have, start having a conversation.
So I made a note that I will reach out and establish, um, a meeting date for that first week of October, so it looks like, um, you're not around, I don't think, the third, fourth, fifth, so.
No, I am.
You are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so maybe I will doodle you one more time and...
Yeah, but that's, that's not, that's not our other meeting. Yeah.
The fiftieth mediation, right?
That's the, the stakeholders, you're saying the school committee is part of?
So third or fourth, yeah, there was a school committee at the, at the large, right?
There were, there were representatives of the school committee, I think it was two of us.
Right. Not the entire school committee.
I don't think I can put one more meeting on my, my schedule.
You don't have to go to those meetings.
You could Skype from the ship.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm, I'm around that week.
Yeah, no, I, I like strategy meetings, so that's why, you know, I, I would like to be part of it.
So it would be either the third or the fourth, so I will go back to the strategic plan
Okay, can you please do that?
And the committee members that were there. And if, if we have the same representation or I need to substitute, then I will do so.
Sounds good. That was old business.
May I, may I just ask a question that is old business? The design of the flag for the two fifty?
Yes.
We need to get going on that.
Okay.
Oh, that, that's us?
That's us. That is something, yeah, we approved it last year and we got approved by the select board. We have to, once the kids come up with a design, it has to be then approved by the select board, but we were told we could go ahead.
Okay, okay.
And by the two fiftieth, so, um, but we need to get started.
Okay, I'll get...
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't realize that it was Good, that's good, so that, that would be, that would be, uh, a good event for, for all the kids to be part, partake. Alright, uh, for upcoming business, anything that we should be putting on our agenda, obviously we're not limited to today, but, uh, please let, uh, Cheryl know uh, if there's anything that you would like to add. Um, and the financial, that audit process, um, I will have something for you to review after I speak with Mark. Did before get anything? Okay, so today we don't have, uh...
Oh, you forgot the superintendent update?
I did?
Reports, standing reports.
I apologize. Okay, which superintendent's report?
I unfortunately did not export to PDF, so I am doing that currently.
Two seconds.
Okay, let's just jump to collaborative.
Perfect.
Um, there was no meeting, but I did get an email that it looks like they're, um, they're gonna need a vote at the end of September. Looks like the property they've been renting is up for sale and they have a first right of refusal. And they're looking at that and another option for the, where they're trying to bring up, you know, some of their other locations all into one little complex.
This is Northampton location?
Yep.
That is being sold? That was such a convenient location.
No, it's one of the ones they're renting.
Oh, okay.
So what they're trying to do is find a bigger space.
Alright.
West Street.
Yeah.
That's actually a good idea.
No, they'll be in Northampton Central.
They've, they've already got two properties that they have scoped out, one's on Pleasant Street, one's on Holly Street.
Yep.
Uh, I like how quickly you were thinking, that's, that's good. Alright, thank you for letting us know.
Okay, so, um, oh, did you wanna do?
Well, if you're ready.
I'm ready, I, I sent you, I just, um...
You did?
Transported or, oh my gosh. I just made it a PDF for you.
Okay.
It's like when you don't know how to spell something and so you take the word out and use something else.
Hmm?
Um, we have had a wonderful opening to the school year, I would like to thank all staff for their efforts, um, at making uh, the beginning of the school year truly a very special one for all of our students and their families. Many of our staff have participated in professional development and trainings over the summer in addition to learning opportunities that the district provided on August twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Whether you are a teacher, student, administrator, or staff member, this year we are focused on building our capacity as learners. We are focused on collaborating, finding unique and innovative solutions to our problems of practice and we are looking forward to celebrating all of the great things that are happening in the Granby Public Schools. Our construction crew and project manager are making sure our new school building project is on target. We are so excited to be in our new cafeteria and kitchen, um, I haven't eaten there yet, but that's my goal this week is to get over there and, and have a meal with everybody. Um, and we are so thankful for the hard work, um, from both the construction crew, our custodial staff and Chartwells for making sure that the cafeteria was open, um, for the first day of school. Um, and that was many, many hands on deck coming together to make that happen. Uh, we are all looking forward to a fabulous two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, we all are.
So the fact that the, that cafeteria was ready and the kitchen was ready meant you didn't have to do any of these contingency plans that would've cost more money.
Correct, so there was contingency for things like, um, bagged lunches, um, depending on the timeframe, there was contingency for shipping in lunches, um, if we had to. Um, pizza Fridays, there was a whole, a whole host of ideas being floated around, but, um, they were able to make it happen. Um, and thank you to the, uh, health department in Granby, um, they came in and did their inspection and the fire department, the police department, so everybody really pulled together to make that, um, August thirty-first date happen.
Yeah.
Um, and it is a beautiful space, it is an absolutely beautiful space.
I didn't see the cafeteria, but the kitchen was great, with everything new.
Yep.
Maybe we should move the men who cook.
Say again?
So maybe we should move the men who cook over there, so.
I wouldn't be surprised if it did.
But at least for kitchen purposes, it might make sense, but, you know, we'll see. Alright, so the building committee, I think you already touched upon.
Yep.
Uh, everything is on track.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so school started, what's gonna happen during winter break? Students in, they're, they're gonna finish the new building by winter break. And then students from East Meadow will move to the new building and they're gonna do everything within East Meadow and then uh, they, currently they are not seeing any problems at all. Uh, everything is going very nicely and smoothly, exactly.
So you, you never really know until you start breaking the walls open to do things, right?
They already did some preliminary, you're right, but they already, uh, did some preliminary tests and stuff that, you know, they break, poke holes and see what may be there, that, based on that, they're optimistic, otherwise I'm with you, I'm always cautious when it comes to construction, just, you know, wait and wait and wait. But they are, you know, they seem to be very optimistic, so I'm reflecting that. Uh, but so far, so far, so good, yes, knock onward. Um, policy subcommittee, we have a date hopefully to meet once and be done with, uh, that section.
Yes, that section, absolutely, yeah.
Uh, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do everything, there's no way. I think it was D next time that we're going over.
Yeah, I'd have to get my folder out, yep.
Uh, and other than that, I don't think there's anything for this meeting.
Yes, so West Street School got flocked?
West Street School got flocked?
I heard East Meadow School got, or...
So the PTO ran a fundraiser, um, and, um, if pelicans, wait, flamingos, pink flamingos showed up on your lawn, um, you then had to pay a ransom to have them moved off your lawn and to somewhere... A flamingo technician, apparently, um, and so of course I wanted in. So I, I, I was on Facebook, I'm not gonna lie, and, um, I said, how do we flock the schools? So, um, the PTO was wonderful in, in bringing over, um, the flamingos and we certainly had a very good time. Um, we had them, I actually have pictures of them all over the high school, um, in various, um, they were sick in the nurse's office, they were in the science lab, um, so we'll, we'll be flocking all, 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 all year long, but, um, uh, it was a lot of fun and, and I think, I, if it continues, and I hope it does, I hope that it's a tradition that we can continue cause the kids certainly knew what it was about and we're happy to see them, so.
That's an ingenious thing that they came up with, it was so fun. I, I love driving by, I drive by a house and I was ID like twenty-five and I'm like, oh!
Three flocks. The PTO started out with one, went to two, and they ended up with three flocks.
Yeah.
Wow.
Now, which other one is...
Are you willing to be flocked?
I was.
So I believe it's over for now, but I will, I will certainly make sure that you're flocked.
Now, you, now, now you can buy flock insurance if you don't want.
Oh, flock insurance!
Yes.
Wow!
Well planned, well planned.
Yeah, you had three options, it really was, it really was amazing.
How come it's done? Why, why is it done then?
Well, they migrate.
The, um, you have people on the PTO who have just, they were moving...
They're in my office, would you really like one?
They were moving those flamingos every two to three days.
Wow.
Three flocks every two to three days.
Do we, do we know how much they raised?
Extremely successful.
Yeah, I don't know how much they raised.
Do you know how much they raised?
I do not, I do know that, um, if you had flamingos at your house and you wanted them gone, you paid twenty dollars. If you wanted to flock somebody else, I think it was thirty, and if you wanted flocking insurance, it was fifty.
And I, and I think it was an additional ten dollars to find out who flocked you.
And then, and then there was also, you could pay extra to have somebody from a neighbor and community flock, so it was like... There were all these options, so cool, I loved reading that.
I heard that people saw them in Chicopee.
I saw them in Chicopee.
And they were, um, yeah, they were in South Padlake, they were all over the place.
So we do have a, a single flamingo that flew the flock and is over on, um, uh, when I go home through Carver, Carver Street and then is it School Street or, but there's, right when you get into Ludlow,
Yeah.
there's that beautiful field, I swear, there is a flamingo in the middle of that field and I, every day I go by it and I keep forgetting to slow down enough to like go out and get it. Um, but yeah, one of our flamingos is out there in Lungo, in Ludlow.
No flamingo left behind.
No.
Alright, so, uh, we do not have an executive session today, um, is there a motion to adjourn at eight nineteen?
Motion. Second.
Great, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you everyone, have a good night.